Recording in progress.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 12th meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. Our first item is our roll call. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Capil.
Yeah, I'm present.
Commissioner Saxena. Commissioner Wong.
Hi, here.
Vice Chair Mariupala.
Here.
Chair Shar.
Here. Very good. Our first item is the approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the June 13th meeting of Parks and Recreation, Planning, and Bike Ped. If you can all take a second to review those minutes, see if you see any things that need to be changed, and then we can have a motion. I believe this meeting was run by Parks and Rec, correct? Yeah, this was run by Mina.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
Second.
Does someone have some question?
Ah, second.
Okay, let's have a vote, then.
Commissioner Capil.
Yeah, I'm present.
Commissioner Saxena. Commissioner Wong.
Hi.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mariupala.
I cannot walk. I wasn't there.
And Chair Shar.
Hi.
Motion carries three, zero, one, one.
And now we are on to oral communications. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So I will go and look at the attendees. If anyone would like to speak, I only see two attendees. If either one would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no hands raised, we will move on to the first agenda item. And oh, I'm sorry, were there any written communications? Anyone?
Sarah, were there any written communications? I don't. I did not see any come through. There was one item, but that was received for the for the public hearing. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, very good. Okay, so on to the public hearing. This is a request for a hillside exception to allow a maintenance road within an existing residential property on slopes greater than 30%. This is application number EXC-2019-003 EA-2022-001. The applicants are Bruce and Joyce Stakely, and this is at 21750 Rainbow Drive, Assessor Parcel Number 36603064. So may we have the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I'm actually going to introduce John Parley Martier, our senior planner, who will be presenting the staff report for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Pew. Again, John Martier, senior planner with the Community Development Department. I've taken over this project from my former colleague, who had been working on this for a while, and hopefully get this over the finish line. This is a hillside exception as the chair had adequately explained for a maintenance road in a hillside zone property on the slopes that are over 30%. So a few things about the project. As you can see on the screen, do everyone see the screen okay? Just want to make sure it all good. Awesome. The blue outline is the project site at 21750 Rainbow Drive. You can see that the site is actually accessed by a common access easement coming from Rainbow Drive up into the home, which is right here. And there is no direct access to Regnar Road because of Regnar Creek right there. So the site is about eight acres approximately. It's surrounded mostly by single-family homes with the city border adjacent to Fremont older open space preserve to the south of the house right there. The average slope on site is 44%, which is pretty steep for an average slope. And to access the lower portion of the property, which is approximately right here, we see the vineyard and the flat area adjacent to the creek. The residents would have to either go through Regnar Road through the neighboring property approximately right in this location, and/or from the neighboring property to the north through there, which is more of a walking path. Again, the applicants are in attendance tonight, and they can explain the situation as to why they need the maintenance road. And as discussed in the staff report, the neighbor to the south has limited their access going forward for various reasons. And there is no access easement through either parcel for them to go down and maintain the vineyard and also maintain the landscaping on the lower portion of the parcel next to the creek. So to remedy this unfortunate situation, the property owners have proposed to do a 450-foot-long, 12-foot-wide access road meandering through the oak grove inside of this hill down from their home, connected to the driveway down to the lower portion of their property. The approximate project area is a little bit less than half acre, so 0.44 acres. Amongst along these meandering maintenance road before retaining wall segments with retaining walls as mostly under six feet tall, some as short as or exposed as, you know, foot, foot and a half to very small segments are about nine feet tall. The total cut and fill for this proposed project is about 760 cubic yards, combined with the cut and fill of the previous development on the side, which is a single-family home. They're still under the 2,500 cubic yard limitation of the hillside zone. So here you can see the landscape plan that shows essentially what the road will look like. And because of its way it's designed, the 29 trees that are on site, 28 of which are coastal live oak, will be preserved, maintained, as well as enough space to add additional native, mostly native plantings, but all drought tolerant along the road, the hillside to one, maintain the fill portions next adjacent to the road, but also to mitigate any type of visual impacts you might have for the exposed retaining walls. The retaining walls have been conditioned as well to have natural colors and to blend in more with the surrounding. As you can see, the first arrow shows where the existing house is, and the next arrow shows the 100-foot repair and setback that is mandated by the 1940, which is the hillside ordinance from the Regnar Creek. So this again requires a hillside exception because any disturbance of ground that's over 500 square feet on slopes that are over 30% do require a hillside exception. Staff, the city does support, has supported in the past hillside exceptions if there are unique circumstances that limit the use of the property to its fullest extent. Again, most homes, not most homes, but many of the homes are built in these RHS areas are, were approved with hillside exceptions, as well as, you know, accessory structures such as decks and whatnot as well. There are 12 findings that the city has to make to approve a hillside exception. And they go from anywhere from the development not being injurious to the proper improvements in the area at detrimental to public health, as well as, you know, a development that would require an exception that which involves lease modification, deviation from the standards regulations in the chapter. And staff believes that this project has met all 12 of those findings. Further, as part of this analysis, and because of its location near Regnar Creek, the city conducted a mitigated negative declaration in coordination with Rainey, our CEQA consultant, who's also in attendance as well to answer any questions if you might have. There's, what was found was that there are certain mitigation measures that that are done with the biological resources, cultural resources, geology, soils, and tribal cultural resources that are needed in order to bring any significant impact, any impact to a lesser significant levels. This item was brought to the ERC on May 19th of this year, and the ERC recommended 5-0 for the that the mitigated negative declaration for the project was adequate for CEQA purposes. Steph's recommended action that the planning commission adopt the proposed draft resolutions to one, approve a mitigated negative declaration, and to approve the hillside exception. And as mentioned before, any questions about CEQA, we do have our consultant in attendance. And we also do have, I believe, a short presentation when the time comes by the project applicants and property owners as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, very good. Let's see. Let me see if there's any public comment here. One second. There's three attendees. I don't see, if anyone would like to comment, could you raise your hand? I see three attendees. I see Kwan Yuan. Go ahead and speak. You have three minutes.
Yeah, not going to take three minutes. My name is Kwan. I'm actually the next door neighbor of Bruce and Joyce, and I just want to voice my support here. So this is actually, I've seen Bruce and Joyce being maintaining the area very well, and then really a good neighbor to have. And I think this road, this maintenance road, would actually help, you know, actually the whole neighborhood. You know, I think the side benefit, I haven't seen anybody mention that, is will be, you know, having those hills better maintained will actually reduce any potential fire hazard, which is something that I guess a whole neighbor would actually have concern about. But this is definitely a positive for the whole neighborhood. So I want to really, you know, voice my support here. Okay, all right, that's it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being brief. And next we have Lisa Warren. Go ahead, Lisa.
Actually, I don't have anything to say on this, but I could not get into the meeting until after oral communications. I just don't know if it's too bad for me, or if I would have an opportunity later.
Um, the former. Okay, let's go back to this agenda item and go back to the commissioners and see if any of our commissioners have any questions. I already saw this at the ERC. I don't really have any more questions. So let's go to Sanjeev. Go.
Yeah, two questions. Actually, I've been through all the details attached to this particular plan. So one thing I'm not very clear, it seems like the easement to the neighboring properties was the right way, was the existing way of reaching to this particular point down the hill slope. That picture is not very clear that exactly how that easement was and how, and that was not even shown in the presentation given earlier by senior planner. So I would like to understand that was there something easier way? Because this looks like a very, very big project from all the details presented along with it. Second question I have is basically the supporting walls along that road. Does that you have in a projection inside the ground, does that cause erosion or some kind of a soil erosion? Or when you construct that, or how do you avoid that? Basically, that's the other other point I had. So that's all. You can answer the first one. That is the most important one, because that gives the pretext why this road is so much important than the existing way of reaching that.
This is Bruce Stakely. Let me take a cut at the response. So as you saw from, thank you, Gian, in your report and the layout of the property, and I can also hit this briefly in the briefing, but essentially the bottom of the property, which is where, which is the target endpoint of the maintenance road, there isn't an easement across our neighbor's property that goes over to Regnar Road. He does, there is physical access there, but for various reasons, he is limiting that, or the family is limiting that. That has to do with their, the age and fragility of their bridge and their playing and use of their own yard. There is another area, which I can show on a drawing where that does have an easement from one of our neighbors, and it originates on his property. And our, one of our, and it's also a walking path. It has portions that are very narrow and very steep laterally and much steeper. And so we elected to try to develop a road, which is part of the plan that you've heard a little bit about already, that originates on our property, meets the 30% max slope, and doesn't cut down any trees, and still gets us to the midpoint of our property, which is our shed and adjacent to the vineyard and the lower part of the property. So we did do some trades just to investigate the possibility of using the other path. And for those various reasons, we chose this path.
So the second question was related to the fact that there are three supporting walls, and they have a projections inside the ground. So the six feet is above the high, above that, the ground and remaining portion, I believe, two to three feet is down below the ground. So and does that not disturb the slope? Because I believe that slope is one of the environmental concern is that not to disturb that particular slope, which can cause various other side effects.
Yes, that's, that's a very good question. And we have addressed that in a number of different ways. And one of the ways has to do with during the installation and construction, excavation activities, there are preventive measures that will prevent sediment from flowing and rolling down the hill that are the traditional bales and such, and other catch basins or temporary structures that will hold any kind of concrete issues. So there's a handful of preventive measures that go on during the initial construction. And then the design features include, which were done by our civil engineer, include drainage control. So the vertical concrete walls, which are uphill, a couple of them are uphill of the road, and a couple of them are downhill of the proposed road, all include concrete V ditches at their base, which collects heavy rainwaters or overflow water during winter situations. And those go to, those are piped to riprap areas. And you'll see on the drawing, there are, there's probably three to six of those that are located at various strategic points, and that riprap will dissipate and so that there isn't any soil erosion or erosion control issues.
Okay, let's move on to Mooney. Go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions. So I saw that this project was, you know, handled by our staff, you know, for quite some time, all the way back, going back to 2019 or something like. So just trying to understand, you know, why this was, you know, rejected so many times, and finally, you know, it's getting to approval. So what's different?
Yeah, that's weird. That's another good question. And we, you know, we actually started a few years before getting the drawings generated or initiated. So we essentially, it looked like the first drawing set that was submitted, I think, was in 2019, I believe. And then there was five or six rounds of declared incompletes. And each of those, and I keep very meticulous records, and my wife does also, we have all of those emails and all of those questions. And at another time, you can take a look at them. But essentially, there was one, we had a certified structural engineer, all of our materials were peer reviewed. And during the process of one of the peer reviews, one of the soldier piles, which are used on the tall walls, didn't have the length set by our geoforensic engineer or geotechnologist. So we had to go back another round and collect the structural, the wall designer, structural engineer, and go through that process again. So that took took some time. And then there were a handful, there were a handful of comments and questions that were actually coming in that I would say trickling in. And we, if you can look at the notes, and our response time was usually within weeks. And then three to six months later, we would get another round of questions. And I don't want to dismiss the questions, all questions, we want to make sure get answered properly. But the rate at which those were getting asked in some, were, you know, some towards the last two years, which was also complicated by pandemic and kind of issues.
Waiting for the CEQA. That took a while.
Yeah, the CEQA, for some reason, we took quite some time. And we actually started that process probably a and a half years ago, paying for that, and took quite some time. And a number of people did come out, work on it for various site visits, and then it finally got released. And we're addressing all of those issues that were addressed by it. And that's part of the CEQA mitigation package that we've developed. So unfortunately, looking back, it was an exceedingly long time. And, you know, we were glad that you folk are here on an evening hearing this, so we can at least make the case now. And if you want more information, I can make sure that Gian has that.
Yeah, no, no, thanks for that answer. It explains why it took long. So I just wanted to see, you know, if anything changed, right? You know?
No, it's just to address that. We only changed the soldier pile height design, but the path did not change, nor the construction. And we did, there was, there were some color issues on some railings that changed, but not significant to the path and maintenance of all the trees stayed the same.
Okay, so this question is for the staff, right? So I know this is a private, you know, access road thing that we are approving. So given the slope and, you know, the steepness and all that, are there any liabilities for the city in any form or shape in future by approving this?
I would probably defer on the liability issue to our city attorney. However, this is a private, you know, street. We, you know, there is no access allowed for any member of the public on this particular maintenance path. I also understand that there is indemnification to the city that we, for this project, but I will let Michael answer that question.
Thank you, Pew. No, I think Pew answered it appropriately.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not approving something that will come back and bite us later on as a liability. Should something happen on that private road, you know, some vehicle or whatever, another trips over, or something happens, you know, unfortunate, I don't want that to be an issue for the city, right? So that's that's interrupted my question. So the last one, can I share my screen? I just, I have some questions for, you know, some clarifications for the property owner. So I'm going to share the Google map. What do you guys say this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know what you were saying, because now I just see tiles in some other window. Okay, so I presume, you know, this gray house here is your property, right? That's your residence?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this is the 21740 is your neighbor that sent a supporting email, I guess, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. So I'm trying, this winery on the back side, is that yours too?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And what about this small shed, you know, here? Is that yours too?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And so previously, you are accessing this, going through this house in the Regnar Road, is that right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So that's the only access. And what about this, this shed or something, you know, here on the top? Is that yours too?
Yeah, it's just a deck.
It's a deck? Okay.
So the shed that I was referring to in the middle is kind of just below that deck, hidden by some trees.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. So you're trying to create an access road from your home all the way through these trees to the deck and come to this winery, is that right?
Well, almost. I would just add the clarification. From our driveway, right by our house, yeah, down to that shed that's under, that's across from the deck, and then we'll take the dirt road down.
There's an existing dirt path that you can see that goes above the deck. We'll just use that the rest of the way down.
And then, and then both the full length of the property extends out of this picture, another 100, 250 feet or so. That full bottom is
It's the only flat area.
And it is many trees and yes, lot coastal live oak, but also a lot of eucalyptus trees and some very old trees and some big bays. And every year, we do get quite a bit of branches falling, et cetera.
Occasional trees. And without a vehicle road, we can't clear it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I read from your neighbor's comments. So this gives you access for you to get through to your, access all of your property all the way to the back, you know, the winery, and then you don't have to use access all of your property, all the way to the back, you know, the winery. And then you don't have to use the path that you are using from Regnar Road through that neighbor.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm going to stop sharing. Yeah. Yeah, back to you, uh, Stephen.
Okay, um, Ray, you had your hand up, but now it's down. So I guess you're
Yeah, questions were answered for me.
Okay. And Sanjeev, do you have more questions? Your hand is
Yeah, just one, one more question. Uh, uh, since somebody asked about the liability part, so it cropped up in my mind. So, um, during, uh, what do you think during, uh, so soil erosion report is, uh, part of the SEQA approval? Uh, I am concerned about the, the piece that you are facing a Regnar Road and, uh, during a rainy or stormy season, uh, if there is a soil erosion happens because you are inserting perforated uh, walls inside the ground, which will basically disturb the somewhat, I don't know how the, so it's not my expertise, but I would like to know whether SEQA approved your soil erosion.
Uh, John Mark's here. Uh, yes, I mean, this, his reports were peer reviewed and further will be further peer reviewed by public work staff to ensure that, you know, the, that this project is engineered to reduce the, any type of soil erosion and whatnot.
So if there is any, um, uh, soil outflow on the Regnar Street, uh, whose liability is that?
From, from the hit, from this new road?
Yeah. I mean, this is a slope, right?
Right, but there's
Speed is facing right below that.
Well, yes, I mean, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
Only one person at a time, please.
Yeah. Um, let me just share my screen really quick. I mean, the likelihood of, I don't think there was any comment from our peer reviewer or their engineer about any issues with, with soil erosion. I mean, you have the area right here and it's just very flat. And then you have Regnar Creek right there. And then you have Regnar Road on the other side of that. So actually going on to Regnar Road would, I, I don't think that was anticipated being an issue at all. And further, this is, you know, this is going to be something that Dodge City Reviewing as well. I mean, we're, we've got, you know, state and federal agencies such as the Army Corps of Engineers and, um, Fish and Game are, have, also have reviewed as well and pretty much given their thumbs up on the project too. And that's part of their SEQA mitigation measures as well.
Wait, when you say pretty much have given approval, what does that mean?
That they, they, they reviewed it. And I know the Fish and Game has got a mitigation plan that they're working with the applicants on. And prior to issuing any type of permits um, for grading, we would have to see those plans, see, see those, uh, those, uh, clearances from those federal and state agencies.
Okay. Oh, Sanjeev, I kind of interrupted you. Do you, had you finished?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I just want to make one point clear that is a soil erosion is part of the SEQA. It's
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, you can stop sharing now. Uh, the screen if you wish. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised by panelists. So if there's nothing else, um, we can have a motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion too. Okay.
I, I have a quick question. So
Okay.
So, so I presume, you know, this property, because of the Regnar Creek in between this property and the Regnar Road, this never touches another Regnar Road. Is that a fair assumption?
Correct.
That's correct.
We own to the middle of the creek.
Okay. Property line is the middle of the creek.
The creek. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, Chair.
Okay, yes. No, please, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve a mitigating declaration EA two O two two dash O O one, attachment one, and approve the hillside exception. EXC two O one nine dash O O three, attachment two.
I second that.
Okay, let's have a vote, please.
Commissioner Capil? Commissioner Saxena? Commissioner Wong?
Aye.
Commissioner Madi Pappal?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero one.
Great. Congratulations to the applicants. It's been a long, long road, no pun intended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations and enjoy your property. So thanks for working with the city. I know it's a long road, but, uh, we want to do it right.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
And, um, ten seconds.
Shout out.
Shout out. Uh, this is a special day. Uh, NASA released the James Webb Space Telescope images. Um, and it's very special to me. I was the near cam program manager and chief engineer. Uh, and that too was a long, long project, getting that instrument into space. So if you like space.
Both on the same day.
Yeah, same day. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Um, I don't see any old business or any new business. Do we have any staff and commission reports? Would anyone like to speak?
Um, sir, if I may.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
No worries. Um, so the, uh, thank you for getting this housing element sites across the finish line to the planning commission and the housing commission that I don't go be going to city council, uh, some point soon. And I will let the commission know at what date it will go to to the council in the event that anybody wishes to attend that meeting. That's the only report I have on that.
Oh, okay, very good. And if, you know, if the council wanted to have a joint meeting, that would be fine too. I know the mayor has mentioned that on occasion. Um, okay, anyone else have any reports, attended any meetings or events? Okay, seeing none. How about, um, future agenda setting? Does anyone have anything they would like to see put on a future agenda? Go ahead, Mr. Wong.
I am really, uh, upset that we still have been nothing about the cell phone towers. And I want to get a status update from staff about what the heck is going on there. That is a simple measure. Um, we have, we have plans. We have, you know, our, our current, uh, city attorney has done that before. Um, we've got ways to do architectural review and architectural, um, you know, rules for different types of uh, areas. We're not talking about radiation. We're not talking about any other areas. Um, as a planning commission, we should be able to do that fairly quickly. This is something that was asked six months ago and residents are starting to ask again. And so I am very upset, uh, that we have not done a thing about this or have gotten a status update and that we have to continue to prod and ask for that. So I'd like this on the agenda.
Okay, um, yeah, I would, uh, I would also like to see this on the agenda. Um, I don't know, you know, can someone from staff tell us, um, what the status is and why this has, um, been taking so long and when they would be ready to have it on an agenda?
So Chair, if I may, um,
Sure, go ahead.
While I don't know the status, I do believe that it is on, uh, it was adopted and part of this year's council work plan. Uh, and of course, there's many things on there. And then it's, it's a function of, of council priorities and, and staff abilities to turn to this. But, um, it is on the work plan and so.
If I may, well, so, um, sir, this is on the public works, this work program. And so it is not some, any, um, it's not a product that the planning department can direct. And so to that extent, um, you know, we'll have to, um, see whether they have any product that they can present to the planning commission. But when that product is ready, I'm sure they will be charting a path to bring it forward for adoption, uh, to the council and possibly with, uh, presentations to the planning commission.
Um, my only comment is public works has no, uh, oversight, uh, body. And we are the closest thing to that oversight body. Uh, but I will take this up with the city council then. Thank you.
Oh, no. Commissioner Wong, I know in other cities it is the planning commission that is heavily involved with the, okay, thank you.
I do too. That's why I'm bringing
Okay, yes, we need to bring it up with the city council then. Uh, and, you know, who is attending, who's scheduled for the mayor's meeting tomorrow?
Scheduled, I probably cannot make it because I'm on a flight and hoping someone else can.
Yeah, I, I was typing up a response. So if no one said he could attend, I can, if the meeting doesn't go beyond six o'clock.
Yeah, I have the, I have the same six o'clock event, I think. Um, yeah, uh, yeah, why don't you attend, Mooney? And these usually don't go more than an hour, so.
They're pretty on time.
Yeah. And, and you can ask to go first if, um, you can ask the mayor to go first since you have another commitment.
Okay. Yeah. So I can, I can go tomorrow and, uh, hopefully I can get out by six.
Okay, very good. Okay, anybody else with, um, agenda items for the future? Let me see, no one. We will. Wow, we're going to adjourn at seven twenty-four. That's, that's so early. Okay.
Jinx. Don't jinx.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. And I'm glad we had a nice, quick meeting and have a good evening. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.